All right, it's 7:00 PM, Monday, May 9th. This is the Town of Profield Planning Board's monthly meeting. Call the attendance here. I'm Tim Straz, John Mayer.
Here.
Terry Ward.
Here.
Kerry Mecklen. I'm sorry, I thought of all too much about it before I said it.
It's fine.
Okay.
I'm here.
Thank you. Gus Stratton. Rich Sacker.
Here.
All right. So before we start, I'd like to make the motion to recommend Ed Ingles as an alternate to the planning board.
I'll second that.
You got a second? Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
You've been recommended to be an alternate. Do we want to take a break and swear aye? Swear a minute? That'd be great.
Right, your hand up. Repeat after me. I... your name?
I, Ed Ingles.
Do solemnly and sincerely...
Do solemnly and sincerely.
Swear and affirm that I will...
Swear and affirm that I will.
Faithfully and impartially...
Faithfully and impartially.
Discharge and perform all the duties.
Discharge and perform all the duties.
Incumbent upon me as...
Incumbent upon me as...
Alternate to the planning board.
Alternate to the planning board.
For a term of one year.
For a term of one year.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my abilities.
Agreeably to the rules and regulations.
Agreeably to the rules and regulations.
Of this constitution.
Of this constitution.
And the laws of the state of New Hampshire.
And the laws of the state of New Hampshire.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Keep it in. Welcome. So, it would my pleasure to ask if you would like to be a full-hooding number of the planning board tonight.
Since you need an alternate?
Yes, please.
If you are.
Excellent. Wonderful.
Ribbit cheer?
Yeah.
Want a ribbit cheers?
Yeah, if you want to come sit with us, that'd be great.
Get on camera.
Yes, smile, Lord. Any public comments tonight? Seeing none, we'll move on. Now, since correspondence mail, I have two correspondents. I received an email from Diane Smith regarding her unable to participate in our non-public meeting on 4/28. I also received some information from Susan Marquis regarding wetland rules. Moving on, review of possible approval of minutes from April 11th and the 28th of 2022.
Want to make a motion that we accept the minutes from April 11th?
I'll second. Okay, and 22nd? Nope, you weren't here, so...
28th.
28th, rather, thank you. Motion for April 11th, John, you second. Any discussion? All those in favor of accepting the minutes from April 11th, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? I make the motion to accept the minutes from April 28th. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? You have two abstentions. All right, so we have continuation of our public hearing on Simone subdivision application at Wentworth and Lyford Road. Trying to recall, we had a driveway permit question on Lyford Road. Any follow-up on that?
Yes.
To the record, I'm Brian Berlin with Land Tech. With me is the applicant Christine Simone.
And I'll just put this up, even though we've seen it several times now. Yep, thank you.
We have not yet got official recognition or approval of the driveway. We do have an email from the DOT tech who has signed off on it and is awaiting his supervisor to sign off. He does not see any negative issues. And to remind everyone, we're talking about the driveway serving the blue lot, which would be right here. Also remind everyone, we do have a multi-family driveway cut approved here, which is to service the pink lot and the orange lot. Also, a quick reminder, the orange and the pink lot are each 37 acres in size or just under, and the blue lot is five and a half acres. Blue lot meets road frontage here on Lyford Road, and the pink and orange lot have ample road frontage also on Lyford Road, yet their access is off of Wentworth Road. We would like to think we're ready for conditional approval, subject to the final issuance of that DOT permit. And just remind everyone, discussion was made whether or not to have this line going here, splitting the frontage of Wentworth Road. For a variety of reasons, I'm going to request that you live with this plan as is, rather than having some line going across. One reason is the pins are already in the ground for this layout. The test holes have already been dug for this layout. To demand something different would set this back quite a little bit in scheduling and quite a little bit in financial costs. I understand both sides of the argument, but I'm still pretty convinced running down that common driveway with the property line is perhaps the better solution. So with that, I will let you deliberate.
You were going to give us this square footage of that buildable area on the five-acre lot?
On the five-acre lot? Yes. I did not get that exactly, and I apologize for that. I didn't get it in my notes. The buildable area proposed is right here.
I know where it is, yeah.
Yep. And judging, knowing that this is five and a half acres, I'd say there's probably about two acres there between the wetland and the property line. Can the mic show a better look at this?
You show buildable area right here. And I guess how many square feet were in that buildable area?
Yes.
And you said two and a half acres in there?
I just stated that between the wetlands and the property line, being the stone wall, there's about two, two and a half, if the whole lot is five and a half. And that's an estimation. I did not calculate. Had to make it to my notes at the last meeting.
Some question. How much of an effort would it take to go... If the frontage on Wentworth Road was part of only one of the parcels, if you went from this point to this point and make that the end of this lot, and all this would be part of that lot, how much... That wouldn't be a lot of work to go...
That wouldn't be terrible, no.
Okay, well, that would be my recommendation, that the frontage on Wentworth Road be part of one of the lot or the other, instead of shared.
Okay. I'm hearing you, but in principle, I still, you know, just gently disagree with that idea. Many common driveways, you find a lot line down the center of them. But your solution is not... Doesn't mean we have to restate things out or dig through test holes.
Right, I mean, the pins are already there, right?
Exactly, yes. If the board insists on that, that is not an impossible task.
Got a comment? Well, let's get the board to ask some questions first, please. Thank you. Anything else before we go to Charles?
What would you say? I don't want the picture. If they just go from this pin to that pin and make that the end of this lot, and all of this is part of this lot. Does that make sense? So the frontage is part of what? 1822. What would be the reasoning behind that? Because I can still do it the way it's set out on the plan right now. Well, the frontage would be owned by one of the lots, instead of both lots. And then it would be... It would definitely limit the one shared driveway and never potential for another driveway going in there at some point.
So I guess my question on that is where in the zoning doesn't say that we... that has to happen?
Well, I didn't say it would be a shared driveway. I just brought up the point that it would be... I feel better about it.
Okay. Where would the access be to that home on the right?
There would still be a shared driveway.
It would have to be...
It would just be the pin.
An easement.
It would be a one-way easement, where the surveyant lot grants to the subservient lot.
Yes.
And that one lot would have total control of that driveway for any future purposes. Here, with them splitting it, it would be more difficult to turn that into a 50-foot driveway.
I see the letter of the state. Is it assured that we're going to get a driveway?
It's just that it's an email.
You think it's a typo?
Yes.
Definitely.
The now versus no?
Yeah.
You think?
I would hope so.
I think it's a typo.
Yeah. When I read that, I was like, oh!
Any other questions before I open up to the public?
When we had the first meeting, I pointed out on this that there's a drainage ditch here and it doesn't show here. It looked to me it was symmetrically covered, like an attempt was made to conceal it when it was installed. It's not random, the way the trees fell across. So I contacted DES last week to find out if there was ever a wetlands permit issued, and there was not. So they asked me to fill out a complaint form, so I did, and they received it the 29th. And David Price, I believe is his name, it was turned over to him. And I tried to reach him today, but he's not in the office. But this is a picture of the location of the ditch. And this is a close-up of it. You can see how the trees are very symmetrical across it. I don't know when it was installed, but David Price is looking into it.
Those are trees my husband cut down.
You see that email, too?
Yeah, it's right here.
You can see that on the road.
I don't have to see it. I see it.
Yeah, they make it very clear that you cannot trust out to take any pictures. So I took that from the road, the opposite side, and then walked up to it. And this is the...
Great, thank you. As far as wetland complaints like that, like this, that Charles has submitted, isn't this... I'm not sure what the planning board would do with this, because we're not the enforcement part of the town here.
How long have you owned the lot?
We got it in 2016. And my husband was cutting down some trees, and he had back surgery that went extremely bad, and he has not been able to get back to nurse since 2017.
I think worst case is DES makes him fix it.
Because what is wrong with it?
We're not... we don't know. That's the... I think that's the point, is that our responsibility here isn't on action. We're here to approve subdivisions and site plans and come up with zoning ordinances. So while we do appreciate Mr. Dolbear providing this, I don't know if it has any bearing on what we're discussing here.
Can Charles show me on the plan where this issue is?
Absolutely, yes. We're friendly. We're never...
Friendly with Dolbears.
Right where the two containers are, right basically where this division is. The ditch is right here. It goes back right down.
Oh, running into this wetland?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
It goes right back here. And it's full of water. We've been there since last April, a year ago. And it's been watering consistently at that time. So even in the summer, it is draining that entrance. And there's a lot of ferns and stuff there. Active piddleheads going right by the stone wall.
Yes, sir. May I ask if the... is this sort of an objection that the driveway shouldn't be built because it's wetlands? I'm not sure if that's a question. A what, or a...
You can ask that question, absolutely.
Is this an objection that it's built... the driveway shouldn't be there because it's on wetlands?
It is a wetland, yes. And there are two recognized peatlands just beyond that.
So I'm just trying to think through this logically. So if the state has issued a driveway permit for this area already, and so essentially what you're doing is you're contesting that?
Yes, I think they need a wetland permit, too, to go through there.
Okay. Yes, sir.
At the last meeting, the wetland scientist was here.
Yes.
He was asked point-blank if that was a wetland in that area, and his answer was it was not.
Yep.
We're not saying there's no drainage going across there. We even admit it's kind of wetish in the spring. There's a hard pin underneath.
Yep.
But it did not classify as a wetland per that specialist.
Right. Yes, so I struggle as a member of the board as whether we can... Whether we can pass judgment on wetlands in the subdivision application as far as the process? It doesn't indicate anything in our zoning.
I think you can subdivide a swamp. It doesn't say it's buildable, but you can subdivide wetland, and you end up with more wetland, more lots, but the same amount of wetland.
Right.
So when DES goes in, they'll make a judgment from their perspective as to whether it's really going to be buildable in that area or not. But I don't think that's our issue.
I... that's what I'm trying... the point I'm trying to make. I don't think, unfortunately, for zoning ordinances and regulations, it's... we're here looking at lines on a map. When it's time for a building permit, that's when the town can get involved and stop the building. But you know that.
Yes. But the building is anticipated way back here.
It's the access issue.
Right. Yes, and where Mr. Dolbear pointed out was, not quite where the driveway is, but... I'll concede, there's some swelling going on there.
When he comes to hill look the area over. My issue with where we stand today is I really asked for the number of square footage in that defined building area, because our zoning is pretty specific on how much acreage you need. And I'd love to have that number.
So here's another question.
Is this the overall lot though, or...
So... I'm sorry.
No, keep going.
No, so I guess my question would be, you know, is the planning board in the approval process going to determine that? Or is that going to be determined, much like the driveway layout, when the building permit is pulled for that lot?
The subdivision writ says for a flat lot, you'd need X number of square feet. Very clear. We're not talking 50 acres, we're talking five acres with a lot of wetland.
Yes.
So the number could be close.
But if the wetland goes diagonally across the lot and splits the dry ground, we're talking about...
He says right here. Better than that.
Yep.
He defined this... where are we at?
The other side.
He used to find this as the buildable area.
Right, with setbacks from the wetland. He used to put potential driveway, so...
Do you get a little more?
Yeah, no, I see that, but there's also a 40-foot setback over here, too.
That's a close...
75, yep.
You can't get across that from that wetland. So this is the buildable area.
So where in the zoning... I mean, are we... How do you... how do we, as a board, know whether or not you can cross that wetland at this moment? I'm just trying to understand the difference between the total area that is in our zoning regulation that allows for a building lot, and there's nothing in there saying it has to be complete, right? Okay, you're going to look it up?
Right here.
Yep. It's 31.
Technically, we're just...
Thank you.
We just want a buildable area of a half an acre.
You go first.
Yes. So is it saying it's a buildable area of a half an acre, right? Is that what it says right there?
31,000 square feet.
Yeah, so like half an acre. One and a half.
Thank you.
And the way they define what is buildable or not is non-hydric, less than 25% slopes. Buildable does include what's inside the setback per that ordinance. It doesn't deny the land between the property line and the setback.
But that's not a buildable area.
The buildable area is highlighted in the ordinance, but what is considered non-buildable. So if it's not non-buildable, it mustn't be.
The board, are we charged with just approving the subdivision? We're not charged with approving building permits.
Right.
So that makes it a little easier, doesn't it?
I think where the question is, is how much area is in with that setback?
But wouldn't our building inspector be responsible for making sure it was a buildable area? Would when they go and pull a permit to build?
That's what I would presume. I mean, we're just dividing lots here.
Right, exactly. And one of the requirements in our dividing lots documentation says... Is a buildable area big enough for 31,000 square feet? That's right. That's part of the subdivision writ. If the slope is less than 8%, it's a woods lot. Well, technically, is it the larger area in there? Certainly exceeds more than the 31,000 square feet, even though you can't get to it. Not presently, but you probably could if you wanted to.
But they could figure out a way to make it accessible and then do it.
Yes.
It's just money.
Worst case scenario, you can't build on it. Right, that's kind of the point I'm trying to make, yeah.
All right, so now what?
Terry talked about changing that one front lot. And I heard some almost acceptance to doing that.
If it's different between approval and non-approval, then certainly you have acceptance. But is it really the right thing to do? Either way, it works.
That's right. However, moving forward with one parcel there, there's less risk to the town with respect to future development. When you've carved that up with multiple 50-foot slots, you can come to me and say, I want to put a road in there. And the panel will say, I have to say yes.
Right, if that private driveway is owned by a single owner, yes. But here, the driveway would be owned by two different owners. And with Christine Dean's approval, I doubt she'll not approve, there could be a condition of approval that that driveway will never turn into a 50-foot road.
I would even know that you'd put more houses.
Just because there's so much acreage there doesn't make it an easily developed lot. Especially in this case.
With today's standards, right? Standards change over time.
Yep.
So today, what you're saying is correct today. 20 years from now, we don't know what the standard is for it.
Correct, but I will be in my grave.
But someone will be sitting here trying to figure out what we're going to do with it.
Anyway, it seems to me the odds are less that two abiding landowners will agree, hey, let's turn our shared driveway into a 50-foot road. I think that's far less likely than a single owner saying, hey, I'm going to turn my driveway into a 50-foot road.
Oh, that's not what I'm going to say. You have two owners on that road. Each one, on their frontage, can put a road in. There's enough space. Forget the driveway.
No, I believe DOT is only going to allow them one driveway cut. Like I know DOT is only going to allow them one cut.
And I think we could work that out, right, with DOT? Give up one, make the other one a road. There's all kinds of possibilities that I can see. So that's... I'll let Terry do that.
Maybe that's not what the plan is.
Yeah, I mean, I think at this point, they've supplied everything that we've asked of them for the application in the review of the subdivision plan. I don't think... I mean, based on our current zoning ordinances, I don't think there's any reason that they should have to go back and change that. They're following exactly what we asked them to do at this point. So I think, based on our opinions, we either need to approve or disapprove of that. So I'll make a motion to bring up for vote the Simone subdivision application. I don't know if I said that.
And how would you like to approve that?
Okay.
As presented.
As presented.
And just a housekeeping matter, make sure it gets in the record. We did request a waiver to scale.
Yes. Sorry, I have to take the notes. Any second to John's motion?
I second it.
All right, any discussion? We've had a lot of discussion, but we'll have a discussion around this one. We've had a lot of discussion, but we'll have a discussion around this one. Anybody want to discuss approval?
Is this subject to the final approval of this driveway? Over here, too? Do we care? The supervisor hasn't signed off yet.
Right, right, so that's an unknown.
But you don't need that to do what we're doing, right?
No. I wouldn't think so. I think there's a difference of opinion here.
What do the regs say with respect to driveways? That's what matters.
Rick, you know exactly where it is.
I'll try to do a search.
Okay. Just have to try to find it.
Twenty-three pages, yeah. Try to do a search. It's mentioned on page eleven.
That's sort of the profile for the drawing.
But that's, I think, if you're on major subdivision, which I believe this is, well, that's another discussion.
So, other, E, other information where applicable. Ten, a copy of the application for applicable state, town driveway permits and approvals as prescribed by law from any other municipal, state, or federal agency which may have jurisdiction, including the New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services, the New Hampshire Wetlands Board, the New Hampshire Department of Public Works and Highways, and the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers.
And that's in the same priority as your subject design. First one is subject design.
Yep.
No, I, I would make a conditional on that, to your point. Make a conditional to the approval. Shouldn't take but a couple more, three weeks. I don't know how long it's gonna take to get their approval, Steve.
He said by the end of the week.
Couldn't we still approve it as a subdivision, but potentially it's not accessible if that doesn't go through?
Yep.
It also says...
Yes.
This is where applicable, talk about that, does that affect anything?
We don't have to put any conditional on it, we can just take it the way it is.
Yeah, buddy.
Again, in worst case, you don't have a driving.
Yeah. You can't have, you can't build on it. What's that telling me?
I don't believe it has this.
Okay. So, do we vote for some more discussion? Okay. All those in favor of John's motion to approve the Simone subdivision plan as presented with the waiver for drawing scale, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Stained? Did you vote?
I'll show you here.
Okay. Two, three, four, five. You did, so, excuse me, hand this. Thank you.
Thank you.
We need to sign a drawing.
There have been no changes made to the MIR that you submitted? Did you make any changes before we...
Nothing formally, other than adding things to this, like the house and stuff like that. The pins are in, that's noted on the MIR. There was no geometric changes. Other than adding those green squares, I don't, I don't recall a single change.
This is dated January seventh, is this drawing?
Yes.
This was submitted at the time, where's the date on the drawing that you had? Terry. John.
It's on the floor.
It's on the floor, right there, Terry. On the other side of the floor, there.
One, seven, twenty-two.
So we've been looking at the same drawing that was submitted. Very good, thank you. It is the night. Everybody gets to sign now, under the numbers.
Do we have to use black ink on that, or does it matter?
It's blue right now.
I think they want blue.
They want blue?
I think, I think they want blue.
My wife says black or blue, she works there.
Used to be, used to be black.
It's just black.
Black would be a copy, right?
Yeah.
So they want it blue to show it's a real... It's going back.
I know.
That's the one.
Did I say it?
That's always...
Yep, yep.
You remember, you're up there.
You didn't remember today, congratulations. Your first day, and you get to sign a subdivision plan, and...
You don't need this again tonight, do you?
No, no, mostly, thank you, Brian. Be vied, is it your, your wife's this?
Okay.
Talk to that parent.
Good. Very good. Lack of students are hearing on this, since you signed it and it's all... Set it down. Very good.
Thank you, yeah.
Thank you, thank you for being patient with us.
No, I think the hearing was fair. And well done by you guys.
Thank you.
So, thank you.
Thank you. All right.
All right. Moving on to new slash old business. We've been delaying signing our zoning ordinance for 2022. We, we're gonna sign it tonight. Congratulations for the sign, two things tonight. So this is, as we discussed the last two meetings, this is our zoning ordinance that the voters approved at the election. We had discussion over whether we could amend certain items, of which we cannot. That's why we're now in the position of signing. And we'll get, uh, get it notarized, and then it will become the official zoning for the town for 2022. I just have to find the signature page, bear with me.
You don't like that?
Who's that? Wild, so mature.
I'm not sure you can do it here.
Yep. And one fell swoop?
Wow, bam.
Wow, that would be fantastic, because then all I have to do is scan it and all that. Actually, I have to file it with the town clerk. But...
I work right next to her.
I know. I'm just thinking formally, though...
Right. She can also notarize.
Yeah, I think I have to have it notarized by her, I'm sorry. Thank you very much for offering.
That's all right.
That was very kind. So, I will sort that out tomorrow or the following day.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
What's the plan for getting the word approved back into that language?
Uh, we...
It's not our thing, but I'm just wondering.
Well, it's the next subject matter on agenda, lovely. Discuss zoning regulation updates for 2022. So, as far as amending three C to include approved, that would have to occur at the next election cycle. We'll have to have a warrant article put together for that. However, I think we should discuss the possibilities of reviewing our subdivision regulations. And potentially, we can add some wording there that would encourage approved private roads in the meantime for... And we can make updates to the regulations, conduct a public hearing, and enact them into, into the law in that process. We don't have to go to a vote for that. So, that would be my suggestion for that.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So, what I wanted to talk about on the regulation updates for 2022 is kind of get our laundry list together of items. Obviously, approved to three C is, is one of those items. The second one would be...
Cedar Park.
The Cedar Park, thank you. So Cedar Park setbacks, so that they are conforming with the rest of the setback regulations. Anything else that we want to kind of put on the list of things that we want to work on this year?
This is zoning amendments, not regulations.
Either.
Regulations, we have to go over the subdivision rates. Completely, I mean.
Yes, so that, I think that would be as part of our amending three C to shore up any possibilities of issues there.
For example, I don't think we require a driveway. Our subdivision rates...
Right.
Don't, don't require driveways.
Right.
Right.
So you can, we can create a lot without access.
Yep.
To a road. Maybe it should be in our subdivision.
Yep.
Rates. That's what I, that's why I looked at you when you, you said driveway.
Right.
And there's other opportunities in those rates.
So probably wise for the next, for the June meeting, that everybody review, at least we should do subdivision regulations. And people can make comments, mark it up, we can discuss it as a group, see where we deficient or where we need to make revisions. Does that sound like a fine plan for everyone? And the subdivision regulations are on the town website, under the planning board area, regulations. There's the driveway, regulations, gravel pit. Couple others, yes, yeah. Well, we can leave it at that for now, it's gonna be a little bit of work to sort out.
Was there anything else about the home base business that...
But we were gonna attack that with, that's great, we, that's a...
Yep, thank you.
We were gonna give that to the selectmen through a... How are we gonna do that?
Well, it would be, there could be a zoning update.
Giving it to the selectmen.
In a way, yes. I mean, because right now, it's, home base business can occur. Anybody can have one without any oversight.
We're always playing catch-up. We never thought of this going in, and it's permitted. So the thought flow, we create a permitting process, the selectmen on that. You come to the selectmen, say what you want to do. If there's any, be any restrictions on it, like, put it out back, you can't start before nine o'clock in the morning, anything like that. That's when you can put the conditions on, on the permit. As opposed to trying to figure out all the conditions upfront, and then the planning board tried to talk you into it.
So, another item would be on our zoning is to remove the list of non-permitted uses.
Is that what, is that what went?
Yep.
Is it to remove?
Yep.
Yeah.
Yep. You have just a list of permitted uses. And if, and if anybody is not permitted...
You gotta get it from there.
Yes.
Because that complete, that list is never complete.
Right.
Right?
Yep.
And more than the times, didn't she say if I use it once, based on our system, I could use it as much as I wanted to?
That's unconditional use. Those were the items I had. All right. Shall we move to C, last item, gravel pit inspections? Who wants to take on gravel pit inspections for 2022? A former member did a very good job putting together the process and, and a letter that goes out.
I think we were, ran across a stumbling block, though, didn't we, on re-acclimation of the property?
Well, I think we're, we have to kind of close the book on 2021, and open the book for 2022, and that's what this item is. So, I mean, the first start would be sending out notifications and trying to schedule time to inspect, right? John, what's going on? You want to take this one on?
I'm gonna nominate Terry.
Well, the two of you can do it together, how's that sound?
I'll go do an inspection, I don't mind.
So, we have a process built in to, in the rules of procedure on how that...